How'd you make out? Is he your first cousin or second? You believe?
Yeah.
He's my mom's second cousin.
Just wanted to clarify, still cousin.
All right. That was funny this morning.
Was it?
It was.
These chairs are more comfortable.
The hole.
How are you?
Are you ready? Okay. Good morning. Welcome out to the regular scheduled county commission meeting for Yona County. We are at the commission chambers. It is November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two at eleven AM. Like to welcome everybody out, ask you if you'd silence your phones or turn them off if you would. We will start this meeting off with a prayer from Monica Hill and a pledge from Caleb Hall.
Father, we're grateful that we could gather here this day, that we might be able to meet and discuss the needs of our county, and that we might be able to make decisions to address the constituents of our county. We regret the Father for the peace which we enjoy in the state and for our law enforcement and first responders. We ask to be blessed this meeting, that ideas may be fair and that we may be able to proceed with understanding and cooperation.
Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Monica. Thank you, Caleb. Appreciate that. Next item would be approval of the minutes for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the minutes for the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next item would be report of warrants or review of countersignature certified list of claims.
Commissioners. There are several on the list I wanted to bring out. Check run from November thirteenth, eighteenth in the amount of six hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and six dollars and thirty cents. There is a, the signic insurance was on this month, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three eighty-one. Also, there was a check to Lewis Young and Robertson for ten thousand. There was a check to Tri-County Health Department. This is our annual contribution to them, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seventeen dollars and eighty-four cents. Also, there was a check in here to Valcor LLC for sixty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-three cents. Some of these are going to be claims that I'll be presenting. First one is-
Sorry, Mike. What was the total again on the registry?
Total was, oh, one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, three eighty-eight, forty-nine. I missed the five hundred and twenty-nine thousand of the-
Okay.
It shows up another spot.
Thought I brought the wrong paper.
So, eleven eighteen, one million, one sixty-two, three eighty-eight, forty-nine. We have one in here for job engineers. This is on the Central Canal. That is a claim for check number three eight three oh two four, seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Also, there's a claim in here for Lewis Young, Robertson, and Birmingham, November fourth, check number three eight three zero three zero for ten thousand dollars. This is on the defeasance of the bond. There's also one here to Valcor for sixty-six thousand, five fifty-four, seventy-three, check number three eight three oh seven five. This did have a purchase order from the prior year, but we just finally received the product. This is for Asafault that are just now being paid for. So those are the claims, commissioners.
Okay. Any questions? Entertaining motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the countersignature of the certified list of claims as presented.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Cemetery certificates.
We have three today, commissioners. First one, Dry Fork Cemetery, H. Craig Cook and Janay Cook, Block Three, Lot Eleven, Spaces Five and Six. In the Gusher Cemetery, David Neil Dumgarde, Lot Thirty-three, Spaces Twenty and Thirteen. Moving to the Vernal Memorial Park, Linda Urvina, R-U-R-V-I-N-A, Urvina, Block H, sixty-seven point five, Lot Two, Space One.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. Entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the cemetery certificates as presented.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. Tax matters?
Tax matters, commissioners. I have one tax matter here. This is an indigent that did not get filed on time. He was in the hospital. He's now been released on hospice. He does meet the qualifications. We did help him in the past, and he just now getting his paperwork in. Serial number zero six, zero nine one, zero zero one two. It's requested that we abate four hundred, eighty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
And he meets all qualifications?
Meets everything.
He just missed, missed-
He missed the deadline because he was in the hospital. Hospital finally released him with hospice, and that's where we're at now. And the hospice people assisted him in getting all the paperwork filled out.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? Entertaining motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the indigent abatement on properties, parcel six ninety-one twelve in the amount of four hundred, eighty-six dollars and thirty-six cents as presented.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. John, do you have anything on that one?
Just to request that in the minutes, if we can spell out the reason why we're approving this after the deadline, just so we keep that record.
Okay.
But other than that, it's, I think we're fine.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passed. Any other tax matters today? Business licenses today? None today. Thank you, Mike.
Just anywhere, Mike? Here, just-
Are you up next on the bid openings also? Bid opening for possible award for Western Park bleachers.
I was waiting for business licenses. Okay, commissioners, we received three bids for bleachers for Western Park. These were received on time. First one is from Green River Construction out of Vernal, Utah. This is for product aluminum bleachers, total fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and ten dollars.
I think you said this, but they're all submitted on time?
Yes, they were. Next one is Winning Teens, Flemington, New Jersey. Their price is twenty-three thousand, four ninety-seven. I don't know the length of that one. Or the length of the other one. And Winning Teens by Nissel, N-I-S-S-E-L, LLC, out of Flemington, New Jersey. Next one is taped up really well. Salt Lake City. Their price is twenty-one thousand, nine forty-three and fifty-eight cents, and that's a six-row, thirty-foot aluminum bleacher.
What was their name?
William Peterson and Associates, Salt Lake City. So with that, commissioners recommend we take them into consideration for a week and make sure we have, that they're all doing thirty-footers or whatever it is we're doing apples to apples.
So the only local bid that we have is the-
Correct. The only local one is Green River Construction out of Vernal.
Okay. Sounds good. I'd say we take it under. Hold off for a week.
And let Western Park look at it and-
Good with that? Okay. Thank you. Next is bid award for emergency management. We have two. There's a hazardous mitigation plan.
And the mass notification. Which one's on there first?
The first one is the hazard mitigation plan. Then the second one's the mass notification system.
Okay.
For region five.
Mitigation plan, the committee, Heidi Lumber, Brett sent this to me this morning. They have met, and their recommendation is that the mitigation plan be awarded to Integrated Solutions for fifty-six thousand, twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents.
Fifty-six thousand and what?
Twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents.
Okay. Entertaining motion.
I'd make the motion that we had give the bid award for the hazardous mitigation plan to Integrated Solutions, fifty-six thousand, twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents, with appropriate signatures.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? Heidi, do you have any? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, the next one is mass notification-
Mass notification systems. Again, Heidi, Heidi and her committee looked at this one. They recommend that be awarded to Genesis. They were out of San Diego for eleven thousand, five hundred dollars, and that's per year for the first three years plus, it says. So it's eleven-five a year. And that's their recommendation on that also.
Can you just stay with this company as long as you want to until, or is there a time that it would be rebid?
So we were hoping to do a five-year contract with them. I don't know if that needed to be stated and-
As long as there are fiscal funding clause in it, we're good.
If I can work with John on that contract.
Okay. Okay. Entertaining motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the award of the mass notification system contract to Genesis in the amount of eleven thousand, five hundred dollars per year for three years, and then a contract, contract, final contract to be determined.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, next is acceptance and ratification of signature for the local assistance and tribal consistency fund.
Morning commissioners, as you got with purchasing and grants. There's some additional funding available to Yona County through the ARPA Act. I'll just read this section here of the agreement. It says, Section six oh five of the Social Security Act. The Act added the Section ninety-nine oh one of American Rescue Plan, or otherwise known as ARPA, establish the local assistance and tribal consistency fund, which provides for Treasury to pay two billion to eligible revenue-sharing counties and eligible tribal governments across fiscal years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three for use of any governmental purpose except for lobbying activities. The document summarizes Treasury's methodology for determining eligibility and allocating funds to eligible revenue-sharing counties. So they've, they've determined which counties are eligible for this, so, and Yona County was on the list. We are eligible to receive two million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-one cents in the first payment, and then there'll be a second payment of that same amount, two million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-one cents, which would total five million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. There's not many strings attached to this one. As it says in there, they mainly just give us one exception that we can't use it for, and that's lobbying, and everything else is governmental purposes, so.
Okay. Sounds good. Any further questions? Comments?
Well, when you said the second.
What's that?
So the first one is available immediately?
Yeah, the first one will be available immediately, and then they'll start distributing the second round, first of two thousand and twenty-three, first of the year.
Sounds good. Any questions, concerns?
Just that one.
Okay. Entertaining motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we do the acceptance and ratifications of the signatures for the local assistance and tribal consistency fund as presented by Zeke.
Authorization of signature.
And authorization of signature.
And it needs to be ratification of it, because we already signed it.
Yeah, I guess ratification's it.
Okay, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thanks, Zeke. Next item is memorandum of understanding and agreement for funding contribu-
Funding contribution.
Contribution providing renov-, providing renovation of downtown Vernal and implementation of the downtown Vernal plan. Quinn?
Good morning. Quinn Benyon, Vernal City Manager. Thanks, commissioners, for reviewing this item. This is a memorandum of understanding regarding downtown Vernal efforts. It was co-drafted with John Stermer and our, our city attorney, Dennis Judd. You have previously, as a commission, indicated uses of ARPA funds, and two million were set aside for the downtown. So this one-page MOU formalizes that and what the parameters are for, for those funds, which is to further purposes of the funds is to acquisition of property intended for public parking, public open spaces, park setting, and community gathering amenities. These, any property acquired would be jointly owned by Vernal City and Yona County using the inter-local agency. And then if these funds are not used by December twenty twenty-four, then the commission can ask for those to be returned. And we, I just note that we've, we've talked a lot about the downtown plan, and it's, it's very much, I emphasize, it's very much a group effort. It's not just one person's plan. It's not just the mayor's plan. It's the, you know, it's, it's the community's plan, downtown businesses, the county. We appreciate all, all the work and effort that, that you've gone to, as well as your staff members, to, to make this successful. We, I did get a question about why would county do this? And my response would be, but you'll, you'll have your own, is one, it, it, we want all this, all the county to be successful, whether it's Vernal, Ballard, Naples, and provide that community connection and pride. And then if you look just strictly, there's a lot of good reasons to it, but if you look strictly at tax revenue, the county with developments that occur in the downtown, the county would be set to receive that more than even the city would from those developments, so. Those would be good, good, sound reasons to do that. So thank you.
It's been a long process.
It has. It's, it's a good process.
It's a great process, but it's, it's been a, it's been a long process and a good one.
Yeah.
Put a lot of work in.
There's been a lot of advancement and a lot more to come.
Okay. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding and agreement for funding contribution, providing renovation of downtown Vernal and implementation of the downtown Vernal plan. That includes county contribution of two million dollars, including authorization of signature.
Second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Yeah. Thank you. Really appreciate it. And you'll notice that the city, city approved it last Wednesday, the county today, and then we need to get a meeting together of our, a joint meeting together, so we'll, we'll be coordinating with you on that.
Okay. Sounds great. The next item has been removed, the purchasing and grant policy. So we'll go to Matt with the subdivision road acceptance.
All right. Good morning. Matt Kazir, Community Development Office. I do have a couple slides here. Okay, so the first item is acceptance, subdivision road acceptance, acceptance of the road and other public infrastructure in Phase Two of Silver Leaf Cove subdivision. So you'll remember, I think, the final plot on this got approved maybe around a month or so ago for Phase Two. It's been recorded, and so these lots that are highlighted here in the the greenish-blue color are the, the lots that are part of that Phase Two. To kind of get where we're at, we're on South Vernal Avenue at about a thousand, I guess it's ten fifteen south is the street that takes you back into the subdivision. And this is a little bit closer here, so the part that we'd be accepting today would be just as part in Phase One. The road actually, if this aerial photograph were updated, the road actually continues, and the improvements are done all the way through the rest of the subdivision, but the property for the road hasn't been dedicated to the county at this point. So we would only be able to accept this first portion. Here are pictures of the road, so this is looking south from the existing county road where it ends to the new part headed south here. You got a kind of a, it's not really a cul-de-sac, but it is kind of a wider turn there. And then this is looking back to the west now. And so Phase Two ends somewhere back in this area, but you can see the road continues all the way through there. And then this is looking back to the east. Back in there, and you can see there, I didn't get a great picture of the sign, but the street signs are in. The light poles are in, fire hydrants and things like that are all in. Sidewalks will be installed with each home, so that they don't have to put the sidewalk in twice. But there is a bond in place for the sidewalks and for the warranty period. The warranty period typically starts November first and runs through May first. These roads have been in since November first, and so I guess if they're accepted today, we would just count this as the first winter season, and so it would run through May of two thousand and twenty-four. That warranty portion of the bond, to make sure that nothing happens with the, with the road. One thing, I did talk with Scott Hardman at the Road Department. I don't know if he's here. So good, I can speak for him, and he can't even say I did it wrong. So he is okay with accepting Phase Two, the, the road in Phase Two. He did say there was an issue down here in what, what will be Phase Three with the curb, and I guess some, some of the water is kind of puddling in part of the curb. So the developer will have to go in and fix that before we accept that portion, so. I believe he told me he's been in contact with them, so they're aware of that issue, and so they can get it addressed before, before we get to that point, so. And I do have, it's an affidavit that we do that gets recorded, and then we'll come back at a later date with changing the transportation map.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none. Entertaining motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to acceptance of the road and other public infrastructures in Phase Two of the Silver Leaf Cove subdivision as presented.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
All right, the next, the next couple are mine as well. All right. The next, the next couple are mine as well. So the next two are non-compliant buildings or structures. And so we're requesting authorization to record a certificate of non-compliant building or structure on property located at 7748 West Mountain Dell Drive. It's a property serial number 35536. This is up in the Dry Fork area, just off the Settlement Road. And this one is a man camp building that has been pulled onto the property, and they're using it to live in. I think they have some workers that are living in the building. We have been in communication with the property owner or their representatives, but it seems like every time we talk to them, their plans change, and they haven't actually submitted anything to get things rolling and things. So, so we're bringing it here to just get the record, the notice recorded on the property, and then when they get the problem taken care of, we would record a new notice over the top of this, of compliance. The red tag was back in August, on August 4th. So it's been several months that they've had to, to get things taken care of.
Okay. Any questions? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the recordation of a certificate of non-compliance on property located 7748 Mountain Dell Drive, parcel number 35536.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay, the next one, we're requesting authorization to record a certificate of non-compliant building or structure on property located at 8,000 West Deep Creek Road, property serial number 35636. Well, those are actually really close in numbers.
Yeah.
Let me make sure that's, yeah, that is the proper number. So this is also kind of up in the Dry Fork area, kind of north of the Settlement Road where it turns to Deep Creek Road. This is a property where they've pulled two of the, what are often referred to as C containers, onto the property, and then they proceeded to bury them in the ground. Under county ordinance, if they do anything to modify these type of containers, these shipping containers, it requires a building permit. So that would include burying in the ground. These containers are for transporting goods, either on trucks or on boats. And so burying them in the ground would take some engineering and different things to make sure that they're going to be structurally sound. And so, again, we have been in contact with the representative of the property owner, but again, they haven't, they say that they're working on things, but they haven't submitted anything to us. So, and again, this one was from back in, it was first notice back in August. Let's see. All right, let me look at the date here real quick. August 18th on this one of the year. We'd request that certificate of non-compliant building or structure be authorized.
Okay. Any further questions? Entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we requesting to record a certificate of non-compliance building or structure on property located at 8,000 West Deep Creek Road, serial number 35636.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you, Matt. So the next one's yours also, the BLM right of way?
Yeah.
Renewal and grant?
Okay. So we have received a grant from BLM for UTU 13079, and this is for Communication Site Television Receiver and Translator Station. It's located in Township 5 South, Range 24 East, Section 25, the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter. Okay, you're gonna have to have good eyes for this first map, but this is located over on Blue Mountain, kind of on the east side of the county. This is the general area. The Colorado, Utah-Corado border is over here on the, on the right side of the map. And I'll zoom in a little closer here. So this is the site here. They're back up here along this radio tower road. This is where the different cell towers and things are located. And then this is located off to the west of that and BLM ground. This is a closer up view of that site. You can see there's, there is a building and some different tower structures on the site. This is a picture of the site from earlier this year. The county has had a lease on, there's been a lease on this property that the lease was up, and so BLM contacted us and let us know that the lease was going to be up and that we needed to renew. This lease would be for a 30-year term. And we have the papers here ready to sign. There's two copies of the grant that would need to be signed.
Okay. Any questions?
Concerns?
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the BLM right-of-way renewal grant UTU 13079 for a term of 30 years, including authorization of signature.
Second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Let's see, it's not 12 yet, so we will go to the 2023 County Budget Public Hearing. Did you have anything you wanted to present, Mike, on this before, or Caleb? We go into the hearing? Or do you want to be in the hearing before, we ought to do this before and then go in the hearing, huh?
Commissioners, I have the same tentative budget that was presented in the last meeting. It's been out for the public to review. We have copies. We're passing around if anybody wants one, and we can just go to the hearing. I mean, I can go down line items if you want, or just go to a hearing.
I think we'll just go to the hearing and look.
Okay.
So I guess I just open that, don't I? I just, I'll open the public hearing for the 2023 County Budget for Uena County. The mics are open at this time. If there's any questions or-
Do you have any terms and the comments on timing or anything like that?
No. Good. On this one.
I can present the totals or go ahead. Quinn, go ahead.
Mine are pretty short. Quinn Benyon, Vernal City Manager. First, we, we of all entities know how hard it is to put together a large-scale budget, especially with all your departments. So commend that. I just, just of note, I reviewed the budget over the weekend, and there are several items we need to coordinate with. Airport, court, so I just wanted to make a note that we will need to coordinate that with staff, so.
Okay. Anything that we, is that like the cemetery and all that, anything we have?
The airport. Just, just make sure the numbers are, we understand them.
I know on the Justice Court, I don't think had anything in there at, when this original one went through.
It has 150 in it.
Has 150. I did put that in.
It was close, but we just want to-
Yeah.
Tell that we've been in a year and want to solidify that.
Because I'm thinking that's-
Of course, it comes with revenue and then expenditure.
Correct.
Any other comments? Seeing none. I guess we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. It's still not noon, so we'll go to public comments. Anybody have some public comments that they'd like to get up and share with us today? There had to be some good stuff happen in the county or the city.
I'm feeling talkative today.
You are, Quinn.
I just, we, this is week of Thanksgiving, so holidays is this Friday, and it is, it's going to be big. It's been fantastic. The committee has been amazing. I don't know how many are on there, 15 on the committee, and it worked really well. We have a lot of coordination with the county. So your, you know, Western Park and Conference Center will be busy, and Jess and Leisha's office has been very actively involved. But we received more in sponsorships than we ever have from the business community. Their, their response has been amazing, and so we just keep adding activities and adding events to it. So it'll be, and the weather looks to be very favorable. So it's going to be a good, good holidays.
Great.
Thanks for your help.
I know a lot of work goes into that.
Boy, we got to kill 22 minutes. Okay, Quinn, come up and go into details.
John, how long will our closed session last?
10 minutes.
Oh, we could do closed session then.
Would that be too much of a hassle if we went into, oh, we got one.
Nope.
Brenda McDonald, Uena County Recorder. There are documents that are coming in the mail to the people in our community that are fraud. They come listing that you owe a certain amount, and I have an example on my desk, so bear with me. I'll just try to remember. It comes, it looks like it's a government document from Uena County, but it's mentioning an IRS taxing. Now whoever's sending these out, they do not put a return address on. There's your first red flag. And Uena County does not send out IRS taxing information to people. So there's another big red flag. I started Property Watch about a year and a half ago, and there's a lot of properties in Uena County that could be put on that. I only allow the property owner to watch their own property, so they have to sign up, and I personally approve them or reject them. So I ran an ad in the paper a year or so ago about it, trying to get people to sign up. If you know anybody that has not signed up for Property Watch, it's on my website, and it's what happens. Anything recorded against their property will trigger an email to them. I don't share emails. This is only for Property Watch. It's set just for this. And if they get an email, it will tell them what type of document was recorded and the entry number and information on that document, who a grantor or grantee, whatever is on the document. If you know anybody elderly, a lot of people are getting mails or watching TV, and it says property scams on there and that you could lose your properties, you ought to sign up for Property Watch and push for people to sign up for Property Watch. It won't stop it, but what it will do is catch it immediately. Because once we process that document and we put the date in that we've completed the work on that document, they immediately get an email. So, there's a couple minutes.
You know, if we can go, if we can go into closed session and go into, adjourn into the small conference room so everybody doesn't have to leave.
Yeah, we could do that.
We could do that if we wanted, then come back out of the small conference room back to here, and it's going to be about 10 minutes. Should we attempt something like that? All right, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want me to ask for more?
Yeah, I guess you have.
Take over, boss.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, we have 20 minutes until we can do this canvassing, and we have a closed session that we think can take about 10 minutes. So instead of asking everybody to leave here, we're thinking we'll just run down to the small conference room and do it, and then we'll come back, then everybody else could just stay here, instead of making everybody leave. So, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we go into closed session for the purpose of discussing pending or imminent litigation. We will move into the small conference room at this time, and then come back in here to resume regular scheduled meeting.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We're in closed session.
So we have in this, like, we have capital disures, which we have.
...
So, it's going to you.
Oh, yeah, I did talk. Okay, thank you. All that grant? We thought where it was three million, we could do something like that with it.
Well, I think five of it's already spent, so.
Okay. We're back in open session and.
Regular session.
Regular session. Do you have one? What's this? All right. And on the agenda, let's see, we need to go to the 2022 general election canvas. Mike?
Okay. Commissioners, let me put my glasses on here. This is the canvas of the November 8th, 2022 general election. When it was all settled and final and done, we had seventeen thousand four hundred and one registered voters. Ballots cast was ten thousand nine hundred and fourteen for a sixty-two point seventy-two point sixty-two point seven-two percent turnout. In the US Senate race, we had for Evan McMullin, fifteen hundred and fifty-nine votes, fourteen percent. Libertarian James Arthur Hansen, two hundred and three. Mike Lee, eight thousand nine hundred and five for eighty-two percent. Tommy Williams, hundred and sixty-six for one point five-three percent. We did have twelve write-ins that was eleven percent. But there were not that many that were actual valid write-ins. I think there was only two that was actual valid write-ins that was reported to the state. So on that one for UNA County, Mike Lee won UNA County. US House District Number Three, Aaron Heinman, hundred and thirty votes. Glenn Wright, nine hundred and sixty-nine. Daniel Clyde Cummins, one hundred and ninety-five. John Curtis, nine thousand two hundred and nineteen for a total of eighty-five percent. And Michael Stoddard, two hundred and thirty-three for a total of ten thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven ballots were cast for that race. State Treasurer Marlo Oaks, nine thousand four hundred and twenty for eighty-nine percent. Thomas Allen Horn, two hundred and nine. Warren Rogers, three hundred and thirty-seven. Joseph Geddes Buckham Buckman, five hundred and eighteen for total votes cast for that race, ten thousand four hundred and eighty-four votes. US Utah State Senate District Twenty, Ron Winterton, nine thousand five hundred and four for eighty-eight point nine-six percent. Jill M. Fellowe, one thousand one hundred and seventy-nine votes for eleven percent. Total votes cast, and that was ten thousand six eighty-three. In our State House Representative District Sixty-eight, Scott Chu, nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-one. He received one hundred percent of the votes that were cast. Commission Seat A, nine thousand seven hundred and forty-six for John Larson, received one hundred percent of the votes cast. Commission Seat B, Sonya Norton, eight thousand five hundred and seventy-one votes. Steve Huber, one thousand nine hundred and forty-eight votes. There was ten thousand five hundred and nineteen votes total on that one with Sonya Norton being the winner with eighty-one percent of the eighty-five hundred votes. County Attorney Jamin Thomas, nine thousand five hundred and forty-three votes were cast. He received one hundred percent of those votes that were cast for that office. Mike Wilkins, nine thousand nine hundred and forty-three, one hundred percent of the votes cast for that office. Steve Labrum, nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-one votes cast for that office. And Steve Labrum, one hundred percent of those votes. UNA School Board District Number One, Dave Shivers, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight votes. One hundred percent of the votes that cast there, he received. UNA School District Number Two, Dennis Denise Maynard, one thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven for one hundred percent of the votes cast for that district. Robin McClellan, two thousand eighty-eight votes cast or one thou- one hundred percent of the votes cast for that one. On the judges, all the rather than reading, all the judges were retained. The Constitutional Amendment in UNA County, we had three thousand eighteen hundred votes against to the six thousand six hundred and forty-three. No, rephrase that, three thousand eighteen for, six thousand six hundred and forty-three votes against. For a total of nine thousand six hundred and sixty-one votes cast in that race. It was defeated in the county. I want to say defeated in the statewide also. So with that, Commissioners, we had not counted, we had four provisional ballots that were incomplete. So those were ones that tried to do same-day voting. They didn't bring in their ID, anything like that one. No proof of residency, signature issues. We received twenty-two postmarked, late, returned without a tab ballots, envelopes, not eligible to vote that were not counted. We had three miscellaneous wrong election that came back from a primary election or something like that. We still had two hundred and ninety-eight ballots that we could not verify the signatures. They went uncured. So we had a total of three hundred and twenty-seven total votes that were not counted for multiple different reasons. Just as an FYI, we received in our ballot, in the, in number of ballots received in the county for this election was eleven thousand two hundred and forty-one. We counted ten thousand nine hundred and fourteen. Twenty-nine were not counted for various reasons. Challenged was two hundred and ninety-eight. Provisional ballots, hundred and seventy-two ballots that had to be replicated, we had ten that the equipment would not read or they ripped or timing markers off on them. And that was actually really good. No ballots pending, everything was adjudicated. And that is our report, Commissioners.
Okay. Mike, I think I had, at the time when I talked to Ty on this, Commissioner Horix thought he'd be at a funeral today, so we had him.
Oh.
So Wendy was put on instead of him. Can we get that changed?
Yes, we can change that. We'll give you a new front sheet on that one. I did not realize that. Sorry, Commissioners.
Oh, that was my, my fault. I, I was under the impression he was gonna be at.
Yeah. And you're probably hurrying to still get to that funeral.
Yeah. So with that, with that change, have any questions, comments? Seeing done, we need to vote on this, I guess?
Yes, we have to prove it. You have to prove it. And I just want to say thank you to my staff that kicked in and worked hard. Had another staff member leave us right in the middle of all that and very thankful we were able to get Ty back and.
That's, that's helpful.
That was very helpful.
That's already skilled in the office.
Office, very helpful.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I guess my turn. Mr. Chairman, may I move to approve the election canvas as presented by Mike Wilkins for the 2022 general election.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks again.
And we'll get a new front sheet on that one.
Okay. I guess we will adjourn. Okay, we have a motion.
I'm not seconding it.
We're adjourned.